The June 11th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in respect of auto manus. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the June 11th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board DAX. The public can access the agenda through the school's district website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing this Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public, agenda items only, please. Anyone? Having none? Oh, that's right. Approval of minutes, please, of May 11th, 14th, 16th, and 28th?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes. And now, superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 5A1 through 5A2.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. or Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, tonight we are excited to recognize several outstanding athletes for their achievements. I'd like to invite Mr. Casalla and Mr. Buckley to the podium to begin their presentation. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, our track teams again, once again, didn't disappoint us this spring, having two, both of them having fantastic seasons representing Mentor High School. We're going to start with our boys' track team, and they continued all their successes. The Cardinals were district co-champs this year, had several invitational top performances and set several personal records. Five Cardinals qualified for this year's state track and field meet. So I'd like to have head coach, Mr. Bill Dennison, join me up here, please, as we recognize our state track, boys' track team members. Coach Dennison is also, he's assisted by Coach Mark Yoakam, Jeremy Paddy, Rob Grove, and Jay Wolf in leading these young men to the state tournament. So first of all, we have Andrew Cabasco, who competed in the four-by-eight relay. Andrew here. Come on up.[314.27][314.27](applause) Also competing in the four-by-800-meter relay is Cam Rigsby. Also competing in the four-by-800-meter relay is James Farrow. Okay. Also competing in the four-by-800-meter relay and also in the 1,600-meter run was Nick Kozlowski. And competing in the high jump was Kayden McGing. Kayden here tonight? A fantastic season by our boys' track and field team, as they represented us very well in Columbus at the state track and field meet and also throughout the season. Our girls' track and field team had a fantastic season. In fact, it was possibly the best season in school history. The girls' track team, in addition to winning several invitationals throughout the season, they ended their year as Greater Cleveland Conference champions, district champions, regional runner-up, and ended the season carrying out this big trophy to my right as state runner-up for the first time ever in school history. So I'd ask Coach Bob Burwell to join me up here, if you would, please. In addition to leading the Cardinals, just a little special recognition for Bob, who was also named Greater Cleveland Conference Coach of the Year this year, so. Bob was also assisted by Jennifer Butterfield, Alexander Ardo, Taylor Nepp, and Jordan Wilcox as they progressed through the season. So I want to bring up the girls, and I'll bring them up, but we had some placers, so ladies, as you come up, just stay up here until we get everybody up here. Competing in the four-by-200-meter relay was Sarah Walton. Also competing in the four-by-200-meter relay was Emma Manke. Competing in the four-by-800-meter relay was Deanna Ramos. Competing in the four-by-800-meter relay and the four-by-400-meter relay was Riley Yoakam. Competing in the four-by-800-meter relay, the four-by-400-meter relay, and the four-by-200-meter relay is Sarah Lane. Competing in the open 400-meter run, the four-by-200-meter relay, and the four-by-400-meter relay was Emma Potter. Competing in the four-by-800-meter relay was Anna Evans. Our high jumper was Tori Lanice. And competing in the 100-meter run, the 200-meter run, the four-by-400-meter relay, and the long jump was Paige Floria. Now, a couple of these young ladies not only got to the state meet, but they also placed and helped us win that trophy there to my right. Special recognition to Tori Lanice, who placed third place in the high jump, so fantastic job there. Emma Potter placed sixth in the 400-meter run. Emma Lane, Emma Potter, sorry, sorry, did it again. Sarah Lane, Emma Potter, Riley Yoakam, and Paige Floria finished second in the four-by-400-meter relay. And Paige, who was also just named News Herald Girls Track Athlete of the Year, finished in third place in the 100, second place in the 200, and brought home another state title to Mentor and was the state champ in the long jump this season. As you can see, a fantastic season, fantastic track season by our girls' track team and looking for more things next year. Thank you. Congratulations again to both of our track teams and to all of our athletes in that sport. Mr. President, members of the board, at this time, I would like to join Mr. Buckley and Mrs. Burnett at the podium for the recognition of our retiring employees. Mr. President, members of the board, three weeks ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different kind of graduation, that of our 2019, 2020 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service and wish them good health and happiness in their retirement. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your official retirement clock, and then I would ask if you could greet all of our board members up front, across the front, and remain on that side so we can gather the whole group of retirees who are here. First up, Connie Aguero. Connie retires from Mentor Public Schools as a kindergarten teacher at Orchard Hollow Elementary with 32 years of service. Even though she's not here tonight, let's give Connie a hand. Roberta Adenovich. Robbie retires as a classroom assistant from Hopkins Elementary School with 21 years of service. Ron Duke. Ron retires as a custodian at Mentor High School with 25 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Karen Girardi. Karen retires as a transportation supervisor with 27 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Gary Hammerstrand. Gary retires as a school custodian at Shore Middle School with 40 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Danielle Chisinski. Danielle retires from Mentor Public Schools as a certified educator at Shore Middle School with 30 years of service. Kelly Kerr. Kelly retires from Mentor Public Schools as an intervention specialist at Shore Middle School with 22 years of service. Jenny Lang. Jenny retires as a coordinator of school nutrition services with 30 years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Lillian Mason. Lillian retires from Mentor Public Schools as part of our school nutrition services department with 30 years of service. Ruth McCollum. Ruth retires from Mentor Public Schools and is an intervention specialist at Memorial Middle School with 10 years of service. Ernie Montgomery. Ernie retires from Mentor Public Schools as a guidance counselor at Mentor High with 24 years of service. Jenny Mueller. Jenny retires from Mentor Public Schools with 23 years of service as Title I, Title I reading, and as a special ed instructor at Sterling Morton. Tom Ramsey. Tom retires from Mentor Public Schools as a science teacher at Mentor High with 36 years of service.
Enjoy, young man. Okay, thanks.
Russ Randt. Russ retires from Mentor Public Schools with 30 years as a custodian at Mentor High School. Kim Rogers. Kim retires from Mentor Public Schools as a third-grade teacher at Sterling Morton Elementary with 21 years of service. Mary Beth Rossi. Mary Beth retires from Mentor Public Schools as a middle school teacher at Shore Middle with 34 years of service. Alice Roth. Alice retires from Mentor Public Schools with 29 years of service as a classroom assistant at Orchard Hollow Elementary and Wheat Care. Karen Waldman. Karen retires from Mentor Public Schools with 19 years of service as a classroom assistant at Bellflower Elementary. Dave Williams. Dave retires from Mentor Public Schools with 29 years as a custodian at Mentor High School. Mark Wardiner. Mark retires from Mentor Public Schools as a esteemed teacher at the elementary level with 31 years of service. And Diana Winton. Diana retires from Mentor Public Schools as a third-grade teacher at Orchard Hollow Elementary with 28 years of service. For all of our retirees tonight, let's give, please, one final round of applause. Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, I would like to invite Mrs. Jen Skolsky to the podium for the final recognition of the evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. May I please have Jenny Lang join me at the podium? This evening, we would like to recognize Mrs. Jenny Lang, Supervisor of School Nutrition Services, on being selected by the School Nutrition Association as the Midwest Regional Director of the Year. This award is given to the director in recognition of her contributions in the meal program she has managed that provides healthy and appealing meals for students. As the supervisor of school nutrition services, Jenny has implemented and trained a point-of-sale system for the district while training close to 50 employees on how to operate the system. The system also allowed for our parents to access an online payment option for the child's school meal account. She also introduced a mobile software program to help students and parents view all ingredients, allergens, and nutritional value for every school meal. Jenny has been very involved at the local, state, and national level, and has a true passion and care for being able to provide our students and staff with healthy, balanced, and appealing meal options. She has held positions of regional director, vice president, and president of the School Nutrition Association of Ohio, while later serving on the association's resolution and bylaws committees. Jenny has been surrounded by a team of dedicated team members who support the vision and goals of the department. Later this month, she will be recognized at the state conference, and in July, will be recognized during the association's national conference in St. Louis. We thank Jenny for her years of dedication and service to the School Nutrition Services Department of Mentor Public Schools and wish her the best as she embarks on the new journey of retirement. Congratulations, Jenny.
Congratulations to all of our students for a job well done and to our staff on the retirements this evening.
At this time, we're going to take a three-minute break for those of you who'd like to go over to the entertainment that's going on on the other side.[1394.64][1394.64](laughter) I mean, we're going to continue the entertainment here, if you'd like to say.[1398.04][1398.04](laughter) You may leave, if you wish, and stay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Porter?
Thank you.
Continue.
Mr. President and members of the board, we have a first reading of a new policy on the agenda this evening. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary.
I appreciated that it had a really nice balance to it, that it was specific enough to accommodate the needs of anybody who would need a service animal with, you know, some balance in terms of accountability and training and preparation and so on, so I liked it.
It also recognized the fact that a service animal is an animal, and there are certain parameters that need to be addressed, and I appreciated that as well.
Yes, dispels it out, and we are beginning to, you know, get requests for service animals, so this helps guide us.
What do we do about allergies if there are children that have allergies to a specific service animal and it happens to be in the same classroom as?
We would have to, you know, take it, I think, on a case-by-case situation and work through that.
Okay.
Certainly, we want to be sensitive to the health of all the students, you know, involved in the classes.
So, thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1, related to certified personnel, and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters. I am also recommending approval of Agenda Item D, related to administrative personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Next on the agenda, the Board of Education Report and Recommendations. Presentation of Mentor Board of Education Scholarship, presenter, Mrs. Briner.
The board is giving two scholarships this year. One is for Grayson Allen, the second is for Allison Lee, and $600 each. Both are pre-med students. I would like to thank Mrs. Jisling for her assistance this year with reading applications, and also thank the board for their participation in the scholarship program. Unfortunately, the girls were not able to be here with us this evening, so we will be mailing their checks. That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Briner. Next on the agenda, it's recommended that the resolution declaring assignment of debt between the Mentor Exempted Village District and the Ohio School Board, Ohio Schools Council, be approved.
I can speak to that if you want.
Yes, please, Mr. Wilson.
The Ohio Schools Council, as part of their cooperative purchasing program, also has recommended vendors to assess school districts in many ways. One of those recommendations was for a company called Bottom Line Auctions, which assisted districts, including ours, in the sale of used furniture and equipment throughout the district, including school buses, excluding student devices. We do that differently. Unfortunately, I noticed last year that after an auction in August and a second one in October, we never received our proceeds for those two auctions in the amount totaling In working with the Ohio Schools Council, they then determined there were six other districts with similar uncollected monies, and at the urging of our district and the other six, the Ohio Schools Council has agreed to make us whole with the understanding that any payments that would be made by bottom-line auction would be returned to them to offset the reimbursement they're giving us. So we're pleased that they are honoring their responsibility as the recommender of the program we used. We've since secured a different online auction firm to help us. We've made some changes in the business transactions to hopefully prevent this from happening again.
So moved. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you being up on that, keeping track of that information.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mary. Well done, Dan. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes. Next on the agenda, Mr. Porter?
Good evening again, Mr. President, members of the board. As an addition last year to our board policies, I want to share information tonight about our five-year permanent improvement plan and our five-year technology plan. Mr. Wilson and I have reviewed these together and feel these are reflective of our financial needs in these two areas over the next five years. Each year going forward, we will present these to forecast our identified needs in these areas. For the permanent improvement plan, Mrs. Jen Skolsky, our Director of Business Operations, has joined me at the podium. Mrs. Skolsky and her staff have done much of the prep work to identify our permanent improvement needs for the district. For the technology plan, Mr. Mike Lynch, our Director of Innovation and Instructional Technology, will join me in a few minutes for that. First, our permanent improvement plan. It's important to note that we all agree that we have a standard for maintaining our properties and facilities- properties and facilities well, and to keep them in good working order. Even if not everything is brand-new, it's important to keep our facilities and our properties safe, visually appealing and clean, and comfortable for students, staff, and our greater school community, especially when it concerns learning. Mrs. Skolsky and her staff have spent time looking at different aspects of each district-owned facility and property to determine condition of certain elements, ranging from boilers to roofs, and from flooring inside buildings to paving outside buildings, just as examples. Based on the findings, conditions are rated, and those areas that are deemed more critical will likely end up within the five-year replacement-repair-forecast cycle. Some costs for replacement during some of the years will naturally be more than other years, as it depends on the size and expense of the jobs for a given year. It's also expected that some of the replacements may be more visible to a visitor or to an observer, while others, like roofs or window replacement, may not be as visually obvious. What I'm about to highlight comes from the front page of the packets you received. So, for fiscal year 19, our biggest expense is paving, which will include part of the service compound lot, finishing what was begun last year, as well as the front portion of the Sterling Morton Lot. You'll also notice that on all the pages we view tonight, the bottom two items under each column will read Straight A Sustainability and Emergency Reserve, each for $100,000. The Straight A line refers to funds that are used to purchase replacement furniture in our schools, along with furthering the innovation that began five years ago. The Emergency Reserve is allocated each year to serve as funding for any unexpected repairs or replacements that we could not anticipate, as sometimes happens with facilities. For fiscal year 20, the bulk of expense would be a roof replacement for Ridge, which is among our bigger buildings for a roof replacement, especially since it's a single-story building. Doing a roof replacement at one time, rather than by patchwork, over more than one year, is more efficient. In fiscal year 21, that philosophy is also reflected, as the heaviest costs are associated with the Mentor High roof replacement and controls for the heating and cooling systems, and in some buildings, the lighting systems. As we look at fiscal year 22, costs go back down, but the most noteworthy expenses continue to be a roof replacement at Hopkins Elementary and paving at Mentor High School. And then, as we look to fiscal year 23, costs are more significant again, as most of that budget, about $3.5 million in this particular case, would cover the replacement of doors and windows at Mentor High School.
You also received sheets near packet with each school or facility name at the top. There's a breakdown of each facility's inventory of permanent improvement items, the condition of each item, the condition each item is in, and if they are due for repair or replacement, and if soon, what year that is targeted. While not everything can be done simultaneously, it's important to demonstrate equity and fairness in making sure we carefully prioritize any pending needs. We have also included separate sheets that show the vehicle replacement plan for the district. We have a fleet of 78 buses and 20 other vehicles that assist us in a variety of ways. We have a cycle established to replace approximately five buses a year and one or two of the other vehicles over the next five years, so that we can keep our fleet in good condition.
So, for all of the replacements and repairs, we anticipate for our facilities and vehicles in the next five years, to maintain our high standards, we will need to invest more money than the $1.1 million per year that has been allocated through the permanent improvement levy, which has been in place since the 1980s. Please note, there is not an immediate need to increase the funding, but it's important to know we can begin these conversations soon, instead of waiting until the actual need exists. As we look down the road a little bit, at least four options exist that could supplement the amounts needed for the identified projects. Of the four options, we could increase the current PI fund, we could create a new PI fund, we could pass a bond issue, or we could take funds from the general fund. For any of these forecasted needs, Mrs. Skolsky and I are here to answer questions, but I also want to allow Mr. Wilson to share any thoughts he has on the four options we mentioned, or anything else from our presentation on the PI.
Yes, I'd like to add, I'm very appreciative of the format of the plan. I think it provides a detail to understand maintaining our facilities, so they're conducive to teaching and learning, rather than patching and hoping something lasts longer than it's expected to. So, I think this format will allow us to do much better planning and anticipation, and as Bill had indicated, there will be years of challenges of identified needs that will require additional funding. On the four options listed there, the first three would take a vote of the community to do. The fourth would be a thoughtful discussion, where historically, the general fund has been for day-to-day operational needs, not for capital needs to this magnitude, but it is certainly available legally to access. So, with this format, we'll be able to incorporate this in both the five-year forecast and working with Bill on each year's annual appropriation document.
Dan, can you please speak to what kind of funds we have now for these needs?
The permanent improvement levy currently produces approximately $1.1 million a year, plus or minus delinquent tax collections, but the voter-authorized millage produces $1.1 million each year.
Do we take into account aesthetics, as well as function, and safety?
We certainly want things to look appealing to the eye, and, again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, while not everything has to be brand-new, you know, I think we take great pride in Mentor. Some of our, especially some of our older facilities, still look very, very good, and that's because of the maintenance and upkeep that has happened over the years. So, that has been certainly a good use of taxpayer money to continue to make our facilities and grounds look, you know, look like they're in good shape.
I think this capital improvement planning process certainly dovetails with the strategic plan of maximizing our finances, and I always appreciate a strong plan. I think that makes it easier on everyone.
Agreed. Thank you.
I appreciate the information as well. I know that we try to tackle these projects, a lot of them, during the summer months, and I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping things in good condition, and I appreciate, Jen, your department in doing that, and doing the best you can. And this question is for no one in particular, I guess, from a taxpayer's point of view, in light of closing schools over the years and decreasing the amount of buildings that we have had to upkeep, how have we come to where this money is not enough to keep up with the buildings that we have remaining, and to keep up with these expenses? How is it that we need more money with less buildings? Can someone speak to that?
I can speak to that a little bit, and others are welcome to-
I'll chime in also.
Chime in. I know that we have not had a lot of new construction. Paradigm is an exception, but of course, that was paid for through a state grant. As with aging buildings, even ones that have been kept in good repair through the years, more and more natural costs are going to happen, just as it would for a home that might start to get a little bit older, even if it's well-kept. You can expect that, over the course of time, there are going to be more needs, just to keep, you know, to keep it looking good and to keep it safe.
And I would add that collectively, we have over $100 million investment in our facilities, and as Bill said, whether it's a home, or a commercial, or retail property, there is required maintenance, there is a useful life to HVAC, electrical plumbing, roofing, paving things, and while we've right-sized the district as far as the number of facilities, we still have a major investment, and the projected needs in the capital plan are not inconsistent with other large property holders.
And did, if I heard correctly, it was a $1986 permanent improvement levy that this is based on?
Yes.
So, when you consider that that $1986 still funds most of what we need, we're starting to see that tipping point, that if it weren't for consolidation and right-sizing of the district, we would have had to come up with a plan to increase our revenue.
Costs to replace, costs to repair also, you know, have gone up naturally. I think that's what you're driving at as well.
Exactly, so that it's managed itself, so that we could go all these years, you know, 30 years.
The PI, when it originally passed, included some technology acquisitions, and now with our switch in curriculum and how we fund the technology, I think that frees up more dollars for building maintenance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on that one, before we shift?
That short article in the Mentor Magazine about facilities and furniture. I think, when you think about a $1986 levy, and what our mindsets were as a community for what a classroom would look like, what our students might need, that has evolved in significant ways, just as society, you know, and expectations have changed. So, I think it's really to the credit of the administrations over time, who have done such a good job of keeping up with change and managing the budget of everything, so that it stays within those same dollars. It's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Similar to the permanent improvement plan, the technology plan, largely put together by Mr. Lynch and his staff, takes a five-year look ahead at our needs with technology. The pages shared with you break this up by level: high school, middle school, elementary school, and even included, includes needed technology in miscellaneous areas of the district. We also have a page that reflects our five-year plan for finishing our current cycle of furniture replacement. The first page shows the years to the far left, but the second column shows the total cost of projected new equipment. Since we also have a buyback program for our high school MacBooks and middle school iPads, after an established number of years of use, it's more accurate to move to the far-right column on that first page, to see what the actual budgeted need is after that buyback takes place. When looking at that high school page, it's important to note that replacement costs are based on each class's current enrollment. It also assumes we will get four to five years of life out of a MacBook Air, which is the device used at Mentor High School and for all teaching and administrative staff in the district. In October of 2014, 175 staff devices were purchased as part of our initial Straight A spending. Those devices are now due for replacement, in addition to what's typically replaced for students during the 1920 school year. When you look at the middle school page, you'll notice a high replacement cost in a 23-24 year due to the need to replace staff devices, but for staff devices, we can assume a three-year life for the iPad before we enter it into the buyback pro, I'm sorry. For the student devices, we can assume a three-year life for the iPad before we enter it back into the buyback program. Similarly, when we look at the elementary page, the costs escalate the most during the last two years of the five-year cycle. In 22-23, we have major purchases for kindergarten through second grade for iPads, and in 23-24, the major replacement occurs for third through fifth graders for the Chromebooks they use. On that other technology page, you will notice their cycle peaks the most during the 2021 year, due to the middle school Project Lead the Way devices, and in the 23-24 year, as a result of keeping our infrastructure strong by replacing our wireless access points and accompanying network switches. Also, part of the technology plan is our five-year furniture replacement plan, which is the final page of your technology packet. You will notice that this plan allows us to finish a cycle of furniture upgrades in the district, including third grade and younger grades, special education, art, and our middle schools. 2021 is our biggest year of expense, as we finish both kindergarten and first grade consecutively in that same year. I think, as we look at the plans for the technology and the furniture, a few themes emerge. One is equity, the other is efficiency. We want to make technology available to all students in our district and to our staff. These plans allow us to finish a cycle that can continue into the future and can remain flexible enough as innovation changes, and we always have to allow for that flexibility. This also eliminates the need to fix and replace technology that no longer serves us well, and in many cases, we can recoup value for that. We end up having a similar number of devices as we have students enrolled, which makes sense and makes us efficient now and moving forward. To understand the process for how we drive decisions with technology, Mr. Lynch is going to briefly touch upon how the Technology Committee functions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I want to touch briefly on our Technology Committee that we have in our district. We have a number of administrators, teachers, instructional coaches that serve on this tech committee. This tech committee has been meeting monthly for the last two years, and over those two years, we have been analyzing our movement towards one-to-one in the district. One of our things that we have set out to accomplish this year is to try to be a little more transparent with all of our stakeholders with regards to our technology plan. Live on our website right now is this Mentor Schools Technology Plan page. On this page, we use Google Sites to do it now, recognizing that Ms. Kirby is going to be moving towards a new website in the fall, and so we're going to transfer all of this information into that new website format when that arrives. But Google Sites is something that we've been introducing and working with our students in our middle school and our high school on, and so we wanted to model the use of that Google Site page with the information that we have on here. So, on this site, you will be able to find the goals of our Technology Committee, which are a direct relation to our strategic plan. You will see those goals and their alignment right to our strategic plan, the members of the committee, the district infrastructure, which a lot of what Mr. Porter has gone over tonight, you will find in abbreviated form there, as well as some further information about our wireless and how that is set up in our district, along with cabling and moving our forward district with our infrastructure. An explanation of balanced learning, as we've continued over the last four or five years, an emphasis on balanced learning in our district. You'll see the three main components of being that technology that we've talked about here tonight, about space, which you'll see a relation to furniture, as along with professional learning, which is also highlighted on this page. And then you'll also find some other information about digital curriculum and how we measure our success. And so, all of this is active and will continue to be active, and we will refine this monthly as we meet, as our team continues to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I want to again offer Mr. Wilson a chance to weigh in on anything additional with the technology plan, and then after that, we're happy to, many of us are happy to take questions.
Good, thank you. Once again, the format, I'm very appreciative of. I think it gets in enough detail to be folded into our five-year fiscal projections, as well as our annual budget development. Nationally, one of the biggest challenges folks in my chair have is how to sustain spending to support instructional technology, and certainly, our district is a leader in embracing that as a delivery model. And our initial tactics for funding included earmarking what was then a new revenue source, casino tax revenues, which produce about $400,000 a year, for the sustaining of the instructional technology, and then diverting some of the traditional spending in the Curriculum Department for things such as- for things such as hardback textbooks into supporting this. And to date, we've been pretty successful with those two tactics. As Bill had mentioned, in fiscal year '23 and '24, where we see a significant increase in spending, we'll have time to plan for that, and absent some new revenue source, will be part of our general fund spending. The same with the furniture program. We had traditionally allocated much less money, approximately $100,000 a year, for classroom furniture, the old-fashioned stuff that I sat in. And we gradually increased that to the current spending level inside our general operating budget. But again, looking out to fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, only one year is going to create a challenge for us, and knowing and planning in advance, as the boards ask us to do, we'll find a funding tactic for that.
I had one question about the cost of security. When you think about how the last 25 years have looked, from Apple chewies in the hallways to what we use now, the technical infrastructure for creating our Wi-Fi system and then all of the record-keeping that is involved in that, it has to be a chronic, constant battle to stay ahead of what the risks or dangers are in cyberspace? How does that impact our budget? Is that something specific, or do we depend on our department?
I'll jump in here real quick. We have chosen to align ourselves with NeoNet as an ITC site, one of the ones sponsored by the state. They are taking the lead in a lot of cybersecurity initiatives, both from the intranet and internet and intranet that districts run. They've engaged experts from the FBI and national experts to provide a support to us in addition to the things that we do in-house. Much of that is funded through the annual membership fee that we pay to be aligned with them. And to date, certainly, we've had breaches as virtually anybody running the amount of technology we have. But for a long number of years, we've operated an off-district or off-campus hot site that can be activated if there's a major breach. Our firewalls are constantly upgraded. Mike and his team are very sensitive to every new breach of security is analyzed and protective measures are taken. We're never going to totally prevent, but we're getting tremendous support from NeoNet to assist.
Mike, does your committee look at the futurist point of view, and are you able to predict or have any indication of what's coming?
Sure.
Changing so quickly?
It is, and that's a key thing with this five-year plan. And I think if you go to the site and you read our first paragraph, it's, you know, we are trying to predict out for five years, but we don't know where technology is going to be next year, let alone five years out, or even sometimes next month. And so it is a constant thing that we look at as a team, and it's something that I feel very proud of to be part of this district, that we've had a board and we've had administrative leadership that has encouraged us to always try to experiment and look forward within reason. And so it is something that is always on, always monthly on our agenda to take a look at. What are the innovative practices that someone has tried out with the students? What are the results? How are we measuring those results? If it is success, how do we duplicate that in other places in our district? So we have, our catalyst program has been very successful with that. We have done catalysts at the elementary level. This past year, Mr. Crowe brought that catalyst to the high school level, and next year, we're looking to move catalysts into our middle schools as well. And so programs like that allow us to experiment, not just with technology, but also instructional practice that allows us to be innovative and test it in small pockets to make sure it works before we go out and spend a lot of money on it to scale it up to other areas of our district. So appreciate the question.
And Mike, where do we account for software and those costs and licensing? Do we have anything that's licensed?
Absolutely. So we do. We have, I would say, about 20 different programs that we use software-wise within our district, a lot of them being web-based programs that we use with our students. Programs like Lexia and Renaissance Learning that help with our early literacy. I Ready is a new math program that we saw unbelievable results from our K-5 students who use that program this year. And so there are definitely programs that we look at, yearly subscriptions. What we have tried to do is to try to really isolate those programs, to be able to use those programs with fidelity, collect data to take a look at the results. We review that in our district-level team so that if a program is working, we're going to obviously continue to invest in that program. But if we don't see the results in the programs that we're paying for, then we're going to look to move in another direction. And so our DLT, that is led by Ms. Bonis and the Curriculum Department, does an unbelievable job of pulling that data together and not just saying, well, let's take a guess of whether or not these programs are working for us. We really look at that data very finely to make sure that we are seeing success with all of our students. So, great question. Thank you.
You rolled out the Digital Citizenship Curriculum this year.
We did.
Have you seen that evolving, and how is it going to look next year?
It's a great question. Thank you. So we are, we have five lessons at every grade level, K through 12, and Digital Citizenship. We did those using our learning management system called Schoology this year, which was a piece that we needed to make a decision early, and there wasn't as much interactive nature to the program as we had hoped, especially being in the area of technology. So the way we're advancing it next year is we're giving access using a program called NearPod, which allows the teachers to present the material in a way that is more interactive for the students and to use the devices as ways of responding to the content that they're learning about in Digital Citizenship. And so we're rolling that out this summer, giving access to all of our teachers and all of our students to this NearPod. Same curriculum, same content, I shouldn't say that, updated content from Common Sense Media. Some of their, some of the lessons that they were doing was slightly outdated, like where they were using flip phones instead of smartphones. And our kids picked up on those things this year. And so Common Sense Media has updated, will have updated, all of their K-12 curriculum, which will be brought into NearPod, and our teachers will have the ability to use NearPod and those interactive lessons for Digital Citizenship. So we will be rolling that out as we move into next year. Continuing also with our, trying to inform our parents monthly of different digital citizenship topics, you can also find all of those past posts on our website so that if parents didn't see them through their email, they can access them on the website as well.
And I know a chronic concern for social media is the impact on social relationships for students. Is there a piece about that embedded into the Digital Citizenship, you know, helping to create a culture of that kindness in their digital world?
Yeah, Ginny, I think I often say, I'm glad I'm not a kid in today's day and age, because there are definitely challenges that our kids of today face that we didn't have to with the access they have with technology. A very strong component, starting all the way in kindergarten and first grade and going all the way through up, is in all of the Common Sense Media lessons is that, and giving kids exposure and having them really think about before they post and the things that they're putting out there about themselves and about others. But it's, it can't just stop with five simple Digital Citizenship lessons. It has to be embedded in any lesson that we're teaching kids. So those things, we have to continue to work with our staff on and making sure that they're continuing to have conversations. So yes, I want to say that they are completely embedded, but I think for all of us, we have to take a bigger responsibility of how do we teach that, not just in those five lessons, but in our daily lessons of math and social studies and science, and how can we continue to find new ways to embed that content in there for our students.
Mike, there be chances to involve parents? I know that's always been a big goal of our PTAs who do a really wonderful job, but, you know, people are very busy. Sometimes it's difficult to engage folks who might benefit most from being aware of how they can help or intervene with their own children.
Sure. We had a Digital Citizenship Night this past April, and we had about 75 parents that attended that very informational Digital Citizenship Night, and we posted a lot of content from that Digital Citizenship Night that the parents that were here learned through some of our email content that we will continue to pass out. But I do think it is a challenge for us to continue to find ways to inform our parents, to educate them, to have us work with partners, the schools and the parents working together to make sure that we're helping keep our kids safe.
Thanks.
Anything else? I would like to thank Mr. Lynch, Ms. Skolski, and Mr. Wilson for their help in preparing these two reports tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Mrs. Briner, legislative report?
I have none. Does anyone have anything to add on that front?
The only thing I would add is the legislature is still indicating they hope to have a new two-year state budget presented to the governor by June 30th. Still a lot of uncertainty as it relates to both the school funding plan as well as the academic distress districts, whether that's going to be inside or outside of the budget, but there should be a lot of legislative activity here the last half of June.
Do we need to get involved in contacting our representatives on any of those issues, Mr. Wilson?
It never hurts. I have communicated with them. Of course, the academic distress districts isn't something that affects us or districts here in Lake County, but on funding in general, the governor's initiative for more wraparound services for identified students, the general funding levels, the fair school funding plan, it certainly would be beneficial to reach out, but to both our senators and representatives, even though the bill, budget bill's gone out of the House to the Senate, it has to be reconciled before it goes to the governor. So anything to, again, reflect the loss of $12 million a year in traditional state funding through the phase-out of tangible personal property, the loss of school bus reimbursement, the loss of utility tax reimbursement would be very beneficial to remind them that we've been essentially flat-funded, but at the $12 million lower rate. So I think any opportunities to share that beyond what Bill and I have done would be beneficial.
Could you summarize that so I can call?
Yes, absolutely.
Our friends? Did I use that term?
Well, we have some information maybe next month about the CARES building and moving forward on that completion of that project, or do you have?
I can give, I can give an update at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
Sure.
That'd be great, because I know the community is obviously very interested.
A bullet summary would be fine, Dan.
Okay, yes, I'll have something to me tomorrow.
Go down the list with them.
I'll send it out to all board members, yes.
That'd be fine.
That'd be great.
Next on the agenda, Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I'm presenting a request to approve Agenda Items 7A through F, and I would just note briefly that our performance through May is pretty much on track with two exceptions. One is because of continued favorable investment rates, we've this year earned 156% of budgeted investment income. Because of a timing issue with new software implementation by the Lake County Auditor's Office, we've not yet received our second-half homestead and rollback reimbursements from the state, so we have a negative variance there of about $3.5 million, which should be about the amount of that. Otherwise, expenses are tracking the budget and other revenue categories are tracking the budget. So with that, and then the more routine items every month, I'd request approval.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom. Yes, I also request that the board adopt the Mentor Public Library Tax Budget as Presented in Item 7G. As the board knows, statutorily, it is the Mentor exempt the Village Public Library District and serves the same geographic area as our school district. The responsibilities for the school board are to appoint trustees, approve their annual appropriations, and approve any levy requests, and also the annual tax budget. The budget has been approved by the library board and is recommended to us for approval for transmittal to the Lake County Budget Commission.
Mr. Wilson, do we have any oversight responsibilities of that budget, or just the things that you just enumerated?
The oversight opportunities would be more in their annual appropriations. The tax budget goes back to the Depression way back in the last century and requires any local entity that receives property tax revenues to document they continue to have a need to receive those taxes. So just as when we do this in January, the library does this to simply document, yes, we have a need to continue to receive the money that voters have previously authorized. And then the annual appropriations that we'll get, they're on a calendar fiscal year. So when those come, we do have, that's more the real spending plan, and there is an opportunity for oversight in that, that it's not just a rubber-stamp transaction. But this one is more an antiquated requirement to allow tax revenues to continue to be collected.
They do a wonderful job over at the library. Summer readings in full force for everybody, readers of all ages.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Need a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
Mary.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
No one finished business on the board?
No one finished business?
We said in, at the May 28 meeting, we were going to continue our discussion, discussion about the budgeting process.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Zero balancing?
I can report.
Zero budgeting, right?
Yeah. Bill and I have had multiple meetings on the opportunity to better present an understanding of a zero-based budgeting model and opportunities we have to improve the execution of the annual budget once needs are identified and approved by the superintendent and adopted by the board. So we have had some discussions about meeting with the administrative team and department heads and other budget department or building owners to explain the process, to get a little bit deeper in it, and then to build some additional opportunities to validate as the approval process goes for any individual spending through a request for requisition, identifying a budget line item and department budget to enhance that, to also identify when it's a larger dollar amount, a connection to the original budget. So the zero-based budgeting model is a concept where you essentially start the blank piece of paper, identify the needs to achieve the expected activities for the coming academic year, put a value to those, and then have it reviewed and approved ultimately by Bill, and then throughout the year, execute based on those pre-identified needs. So I think that we've seen some opportunities for some enhancements and some more support in the budget development process at the administrative level going forward. Certainly, the capital plan you saw tonight, the technology plan, the furniture plan, the vehicle replacement plan, all are big pieces of identifying some of our large discretionary spending categories in advance so that we can then ensure that they're funded once approved by the superintendent and the board, and then monitor throughout the and then monitor throughout the academic year, the actual spending of those dollars.
I think there's many positive things that have come about with our budget process. The strategic plan is a viable plan that's driving decision-making, including the budget. And the capital improvement plan and the technology plan enhance it. So there are many, many positives about our budget process. My question, or I guess raising an issue of a couple of opportunities for improvement, would be if we're using zero-based budgeting, then we set, you know, we do the needs assessment and we plan the budget, and then we stick to the budget number. And I would just like to see that, once the budget is set, that it's pretty much adhered to. And if there, if there is a need that comes up as you're going through the budget, then you save that for the needs assessment part for the next budget cycle. I think if you, my issue is that if we go over on one category and take it from another category that was underspent, then, okay, it works out math-wise. But I just have a problem with what that does to our planning process. And I would think that if Dan has to do a five-year plan and we're adjusting our capital improvement plans and technology plans, that can get in the way of that process. And then my second suggestion, or just an area for discussion, would be, I'd like to see at the end of the budget cycle, an analysis of what happened with the spending. What worked, what should we look at differently? And then make that part of the needs assessment process. So it's more cyclical, and maybe that enhances zero-based budgeting. Budgeting is not my shtick, but my experience was running building budgets. But I just, I understand that the planning process is, needs to be protected. And I'm just talking about improving the process. I think what we have in place is so much stronger than it was five years ago. And I just would like to see us improve and move forward. And just putting it out there.
I would be open to exploring some additional structures, I think, to just sharpen what we are already doing, but to your point, you know, try to identify those things that may be, have, need a little bit of improvement. So, we can look at some structures and try to build those in.
That's good. I mean, improving the process certainly enhances the organization. But overall, I think we're off into a great positive direction.
And I would just add that I think the zero-based budgeting model is one we've embraced. We actually use three different models, some for regulatory purposes. We use a pupil allocation model for discretionary building spending to ensure that our federal funds are not jeopardized. There's federal oversight about not supplanting local spending with federal dollars. And those monies that are deployed to buildings are for non-capital, non, things that are outside the plans you saw. It's more building-specific, as you'll recall. We also use a baseline model. Once Bill determines a staffing level for each year, we then use that for salary and benefits. That's more of what did we do last year, what are the pluses and minuses? What are the inflation rates for, whether it's health insurance or pension costs, or whatever it might be? And then the bulk of the discretionary spending is a zero-based budget model. There are five other recognized budget models in K-12 education nationally. I would, some might address more your notion about at the end reconciling that. But I think right now, the zero-based budget model with some additional enhancements at the end of the year still is serving the district well. We can, a planned program budgeting model has a formal reconciliation at the end of the year that then is the starting point for the following year's budget. But right now, I think, working with Bill with some enhancements with the zero-based budget model will give us the opportunity to achieve the things you're requesting.
Would there be a structure that could be in place for a specific revision? So, an opportunity, a shift that couldn't be anticipated? Not just willy-nilly, well, we had extra here, we'll put it there. But that there would be a process so that if there was a need or a change that we could recognize, that we would look at making that adjustment? Because a year is a long time in the life of any organization. So that while I think the structures definitely needs to be protected, you don't want it to be too rigid either. But there should be a way to do it.
Well, and we do, one of the enhancements, and part of my consent agenda is approval of appropriation modifications, that if monies are moved from one category to another, whether it's inside the same department or same building, or shifting between departments or buildings, we don't identify whether it's interdepartmental or in a building. But anytime monies are shifted from one category to another, we do request board approval. And we try to give a brief, few words explanation. For instance, the very first one this month was to adjust a high school budget equipment purchases by $650 out of the supply line into the capital spending line. So we could look at enhancing the explanation. I am aware of districts have set a dollar threshold where there needs to be a more detailed explanation presented to the board, independent of a $650 item. And the student activity, or I'm sorry, student services budget, as we discussed during the five-year forecast, there's always a challenge with the timing of billing and new identified needs for certain students. And this month, we requested the monies be reallocated within the special ed tuition accounts, both the district-wide and the ones in student services. And those totaled about $125,000. And again, the explanation was to adjust budget for special education student tuition expenses. And as we said, sometimes those are, at the end of the fiscal year, where they're a little difficult to pre-identify, certainly within overall budget, but different categories based on different student needs, the type of assistance we're providing a student. But there have been some boards of education that says above some dollar threshold, we want a more complete explanation. We want to know, within the context of the original budget, is something not going to get done because of a significant shifting of funds? So that's another possibility. I would ask that let's go into this coming year with some refinements that Bill and I have been talking about, see how we're doing, and then know that either looking at other budget models or looking at some threshold above which there needs to be separate board discussions before approval spending occurs, we could pursue those options.
I agree that it should, there should be some flexibility. I mean, eventually, when it becomes a perfect world in May, we're going to see every budget is right on and there's no overages.
And no, no left over.
Well, I'll remind you of a comment Mike made up there, that it's tough to predict next week, let alone next year. And there are some, many of our things, again, as we all know, over 75% of our budget is salary and benefits, which are pretty predictable. Our fixed costs are about another 12%, whether it's utility bills or property casualty liability insurance, auditor and treasurer's fees. But that discretionary spend, things happen. A tariff on a foreign country could raise costs 25% overnight. And that's something out of our control, but could enter into our world depending on the type of spending we're talking about, whether it's vehicles with parts that come from other countries or some other major purchase. So, we'd like to think that within that one-year window, we have a greater confidence of estimating and predicting costs, but it's not a science, it's still hard.
I know.
So what do we do moving forward? We're going to have a work session, look at something a month out from now, two months?
He just wants to refine a zero-based budgeting process.
My, and we'll do whatever the board wishes. My suggestion is that Bill and I continue our discussions and engage the budget managers at all levels with more support and guidance on the front-end development of the budgets and the approval process that goes through Bill before it comes to the board. And then we monitor that throughout the year to see if that step provided the enhancements the board was hoping for, and whether we get halfway through the fiscal year or more to the May timeframe. Again, the options for the board is to consider a different budget model or to consider adopting some threshold at which you say, you know, we need more information before we'll give approval. The third is to reflect it, my performance evaluation, if you don't feel we're doing a good job.
Well, Dan, it's not, that's not the question. But the threshold, I'm in favor of a threshold.
And we can do that sooner or later.
A percentage or a dollar amount. To report on $650, we don't need that. But to report, I'd say that furniture issue that we spoke about.
I don't know, I would lean towards, let them refine the process. The strategic plan as a viable document is new. It's really new for our district. And so is the five-year capital and technology plan. They've started to implement that. There are going to be glitches and bugs, it's part of the learning curve. So I, you know, I would suggest, let's work the bugs out. And if administration needs extra structure, then we can talk about it then. But right now, I'm comfortable with, let the learning occur.
Yes, and I think Bill and I have gotten good takeaways from the discussion last month, and again, from the discussions tonight, that give me confidence that we'll be able to provide some additional support and enhancements for this coming year.
I would agree. Ken, thank you for bringing this up tonight. I think putting the ball in the court of Dan and Bill and letting them have that discussion with department heads, getting the message out that the board is, you know, wanting some awareness and some consciousness about this is the first step. And then we revisit it, whether it's six months or a year, whatever everyone's comfortable with, and see if that gave us the results we're looking for. Would everyone agree with that?
Especially since the point we are in our levy cycle. You know, things get more and more.
It is looming.
Yeah, and trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of our learners as well as being transparent with the community as to what's happening.
Following our strategic plan.
Exactly.
I think we saw tonight in the five-year plans presented, there's some larger than normal spending that's anticipated. And again, one of the options is to use the general fund money. But whether we use that or pursue other revenue sources is something that's inside the budget development process. So I think that's an important new piece for us, not just for the five-year plan, but for the budget execution itself.
Permanent improvement needs and all the rest of that.
And under new business, I have one request. As you know, we need authority every year or two officially close the books at fiscal year end and make sure we're dotting i's and crossing t's for audit purposes. Requesting the board consider the availability for a 5:00 or 5:30 meeting on June 27th, if that's possible. If not, select another date as near the end of month as possible.
That was June 27th, Thursday?
Yes, 27th, 5:00 or 5:30. Again, typically, these meetings are about a half hour.
I'm good, I'm good. I propose 5:15.
I'm out of town.
Okay, is there another date later that week?
I'm out of town, the 26th to the 30th.
How about the 25th?
I could do the 25th.
I'm out of town.
But you need it before July 1st, correct?
Correct. We need authority to close there. And the closer the end of the month, the better for us as far as doing the things we need to do.
24th, Monday the 24th.
24th would not be good for me. All other days, four days would be fine.
Do you need all five of us, Dan, or just a quorum?
No, just need three.
Well, Bill would be more important.
Am I essential to this vote if we're in contact beforehand for whatever is needed?
And I defer to your judgment. This is more of an audit, dotting i's, crossing t's, than some new information. It's giving us authorization to close the books, any final appropriation modifications or interfund transfers.
Sounds like late that week works well for most of the group, and I don't want to stand in the way of that.
I can do that. The 27th that you were talking about, if that's.
27th.
Reference for 5:00 or 5:30?
5:15 or 5:30 is better for me.
5:30 acceptable?
Works for me.
5:30, June 27th?
Anytime of that date.
Cardinal conference, or here?
Yes, Cardinal Conference, if that's okay. Thank you, Bill, for your flexibility there.
Thank you.
So that's June 27th at 5:30, correct?
And there's, everyone can, we can have a, we have a quorum for that date?
Yes, yeah, we've got.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Thank you for that.
Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on any subject? Anyone? Hearing none? We are not going into executive session? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
Mary.
Mary.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.